We call a regular San Dimas City Council meeting to order. We ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda this evening is for the Parks and Recreation and the city to recognize the sponsors of the Holiday Extravaganza. For those of you who participated in the Holiday Extravaganza this year, I think you realize it was a great event and there were some sponsors that helped a lot with that process. And this evening, we want to honor them. So, the city is, would like to recognize three organizations that played an integral part in the success of this year's 10th Annual Holiday Extravaganza Event. Those organizations and their representatives here tonight are Christina Jonaux of Majestic Realty Company. Just a word about Majestic Realty Company, they've been involved with San Dimas since well before I started being involved with San Dimas and still own properties here, developed a lot of very nice properties and have been, for a long time, have been partners with the city in various things. And we are very happy that they are continuing that and the last two years have been a major part of the sponsorship of our event. Then we would like to also recognize Bob Neela and Sheila Leonard of Golden State Water Company, also a company located in San Dimas that has long been a partner in a number of events, including the birthday barbecue, all of the fire and everything for the cooking of the meat. In our deep pit barbecue is, they've been, people from the Golden State Water have been handling that for many, many years. And Diane, Diana Roberts and Debbie Malouf of the San Dimas Senior Club, they also give back a lot to the community and in the form of, primarily, they provide the ice for the sleigh rides and things like that, as Hector will explain in further detail about what they do. But all of these sponsors do a lot for the city and we very much appreciate what they do. So, I'd like to turn the matter over now to Parks and Recreation Director Hector Kissamen.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members in the audience. We are very grateful to these folks for having been a part of the Holiday Extravaganza. It indeed was a wonderful event and they played a very large role in that. But I will turn it over to our recreation manager, Tim Pagano, who is going to say a few words.
Thank you Director Kissamen, Mayor and members of the council and San Dimas team. On behalf of the city of San Dimas and the Parks and Recreation Department, we would just like to sincerely share our gratitude for the support that your organizations provided for the Holiday Extravaganza event. I think Mayor and Director Kissamen summed it up nicely. You know, the impact that your organizations allowed us to make in the community and for that night's event was something that would be truly memorable and we appreciate all the support that you've provided us and the Holiday Extravaganza. So, on behalf of the city and the Parks and Recreation Department, we have some plaques that we would like to present you.
it for a long time and we really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of the representatives and the members of the audience, we actually have a small vignette that we put together just to share our thanks. So, if I could get Deborah, if you wouldn't mind playing that, that would be wonderful. And then we're all done.
Thank you. Next, we are going to have a presentation from the Los Angeles Regional Census Center and I believe Connie Lowe is here to tell us all about the census.
I'm Connie Lowe of the U.S. Census Bureau and we're here to talk to you about the census, which is starting really soon in March of 2020. So, simply put, just briefly, the census is a count of every single person that lives in the entire country, right? And it happens every 10 years and has since the 1700s. And the reason that we do this is for redistricting purposes, which is super important for both of our federal government as well as our local governments, right? And also the distribution of federal funds. Over $675 billion are distributed annually from federal governments into state and local communities. And a lot of these funds have a really big impact on our community. Many of these funds are distributed into our medical programs, which are really impactful for our communities in terms of, I know several of you sit on the San Dimas Community Hospital Board or the Pomona Valley Hospital Board, and so that's a really huge safety net for our communities, as well as roads and schools and even individual college scholarships like Pell Grants. All of these are impacted by how we are counted in the census. And so, I just want to emphasize how important it is that we get a complete count of the entire country and we make sure that San Dimas in particular is counted to the fullest extent. So, this year will be the first year that we have the internet option for responding to the census. So, in our first mailing in March, there will not be a census questionnaire included in the envelope. They will receive an invitation to respond to the census questionnaire online. You can also respond over the phone and after several reminder mailings, it is only then will we send you a paper census questionnaire. The good thing about the internet self-response and the phone response is that they are available in English and 12 other non-English languages, so you have the ability to toggle back and forth in the internet self-response form, as well as the ability to call 12 different language lines as according to your needs, so you won't have to deal with the prompts of press one for English, press two for Spanish, press three for Chinese. The paper form unfortunately is only available in English and Spanish. So, here are some, here are the languages listed that we support at the Census Bureau. Okay. And I really, really want to emphasize that answering to census questionnaire is very, very private and we ensure that your data is kept very, very confidential. At the Census Bureau, we take confidentiality and privacy extremely, extremely seriously. Everyone is protected by Title 13 of the U.S. Code. And all census employees swear a lifetime oath to protect this information. Just because I may no longer be working for the Census Bureau does not mean that I am absolved of my duty to protect this information. And we are individually accountable for this. Penalties, if I disclose information wrongfully, is five years of imprisonment and a fine of $250,000. So, we take our duty very seriously. And I just want to emphasize that and ask if there are any questions, because this is something that we have seen some concerns about in this particular time.
Where is your office going to be located? 10 years ago, it was here in San Dimas.
So, we have, the LA Regional Census Office is located in downtown Los Angeles off Fifth Street. We do have area census offices that will be responsible for the group quarters enumeration as well as the non-response follow-up. So, the closest area census office to San Dimas is actually in West Covina. Then we also have offices in Pasadena, Santa Clarita, Long Beach, South Gate, as well as several other offices throughout Los Angeles.
Thank you.
So, this is an overview of our timeline. So, the first mailing for the census will occur in mid-March, then we will send several reminders and it is in the early April mailing that you will receive a paper questionnaire if you still have not responded via internet or over the phone. Then in late April, you receive a final reminder if you still haven't responded in any of the ways that we've made available. And after that, in May is when we start our non-response follow-up. That's when our census takers come to your door and ask you to respond to your census questionnaire in person. I just wanted to briefly touch on group quarters and transitory location. So, this is our operation, our largest operation other than non-response follow-up, in which we have census enumerators go out and actually enumerate group quarters. And that is homeless shelters, college dormitories, prisons, jails, nursing homes and the like. What is significant about this is that we are dependent on our data, which is sometimes incomplete, and then also stakeholders to give us input on where these group quarters are located, right? We unfortunately don't necessarily have the information of where every nursing home in the entire country is located. And so, if you are familiar with these locations, it would actually be extremely helpful to us if you would share that information with us to ensure that we have a complete count of the community. So, at this point in time, I also want to just briefly mention census jobs and throw to my colleague Dave Garcia to talk a little bit about how important census jobs are, because all of our census takers doing that group quarters enumeration and the non-response follow-up will need to be hired as federal employees.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll be just a few minutes. So, we are looking for thousands of workers. In fact, the email I got last Thursday, they're looking for 1,300 and change by February 6th. We are offering $25 for the people that go door-to-door. Those are considered the census takers to find out how many people live in the house and how long they've been there and whatnot. And there's other jobs up there as well, the office clerks, the office operations supervisors, and census field supervisors, but mainly, we're looking for the enumerator. And just before I go, I want to give a shout-out for my appreciation for the help from certain members of San Dimas, Mrs. Deborah Black, the city clerk, I don't know if Bradley Stewart's here, facilities manager, Sylvia Melendez from the San Dimas Chamber of Commerce, Dominique Borga from the senior center, and last but not least, my friend Nora Chen from the San Dimas library. She's been very helpful and supportive. In fact, she hosted a presentation for us today and I did one back in October. So, there's flyers with the jobs and the amount we're paying and there's some here in the recreation center, there's some over there by the administrative office, and we have some in the library as well. And I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for your time. I'd just like to make an ask that in addition, do you help get the word out about the census, promoting jobs and making sure that people understand the importance of the census? Because I think we all receive a lot of junk mail these days and we don't want that to get lost in the shuffle. And so, please invite Dave and I out to your community events, to your organizations, to other, to your libraries, to your nursing homes, to talk about the census and how important it is. And you have my contact information in your folders and here, if you have any questions, please feel free to follow up. In the folders, you have some general information about the census as well as some job flyers as well. Thank you so much for your time and if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
You know, I just have one question. We depend wholeheartedly with the county to try to come up with our homeless counts and we hear homeless counters, there's five, seven, 10, 20, but you see people wandering off down the street with shopping carts. Are you guys going to be able to get an accurate count for communities on what type of homeless issues that we have? Or is that even going to be a thought in your mind?
So, we do count the homeless. They are part of our group quarters operation. So, they're part of the operation called service-based enumeration and Tensil, so, which is targeted non-shelter outdoor locations. So, through a three-day period, we go to homeless shelters, soup kitchens and mobile food vans and we enumerate the people that use these service locations that are homeless. And then targeted outdoor, targeted non-shelter outdoor locations is when we go to places with large homeless populations that are outdoors and non-shelters and we have enumerators actually count the people that are living in these encampments. So, that's also something where we can only count folks where we know that they are. So, if you are familiar with these outdoor locations that have large homeless populations, we would love to have that information. It is a very extremely, extremely difficult population to count. We do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the city council. We have, the rules are, you have to come up to the microphone and talk to us. We ask that you give us your name and where you live. If that is not a legal requirement, we'll listen to you if you choose not to. We also have a time limit of three minutes. So, if you're speaking, you have a green light for two minutes, an orange light for one minute, and then the pit and the floor opens. So, anybody wants to participate now is the time.
Hello, my name is Bobby Mathis and I live on Allen Avenue and I've received something that I don't think anybody would like to read, but I will share it with you. Jones and responding to Grant, sorry, he is only running because he has a beef with the mayor. Well, one thing is, I'm not running for mayor against Emmett, I'm just running against Mr. Morris's legacy. But, so we have something on the next door app. It went on to even say, that's kind of disturbing, you should listen to his rants during the city meetings and his threats to Mr. Morris. He also likes to put signs wherever he wants without permission. He has never done anything for the city except for himself. He definitely doesn't, he definitely doesn't have my vote. So, Mr. Morris, I have a question for you. I know you're only limited, but what is this business about threats? I mean, hopefully this is, are you aware of any threats that I may have come across to you by any chance?
This is the time for the public to give comments to the city council and not engage in a discussion.
Okay, okay, cool. Because, you know, good, okay, I'm glad that wasn't clarified. So, you know, and also too, I want to think that we have a really good, I appreciate our new lawyer here, I hear him referencing to what is fair our new lawyer here, I hear him referencing to what is fair and honest and forthright and Mr. Kendran, I really appreciate him. But also too, Mr. Morris, we know in terms of the threats and stuff like that, we've had our little dispute and it gone to court, and the police department also gave me a recorder back when I was used as an agent for them. And they also gave me permission and explained to me when there's threats and that kind of thing. So, you know, I would like to actually-
So the kitchen, it's not even in the unit, right? That's what you told me. Then there may be a question if then oak was in approved. It was a plan that I had.
But you even told me to go down to the city and get a demolition permit to take out the kitchen.
Yeah, a demolition to demolish the building.
No, no, you said the kitchen.
Not the building.
No, you said the kitchen. You didn't say the-
Well-
Listen, I can prove it. I mean, listen, I-
Well, okay, but the question is, but you've never got a permit to go those after the second year.
Wait, wait, you did, you did call me up and say the city was going to threaten me to tear my house down if I didn't sign that.
They didn't tear that down. The second year. That was illegal. It was, it was, you did not-
Go ahead, comment.
You were not in compliance.
I'm just going to say, Bobby, that, that conversation could cost you $5,000. I elected not to sue you.
I will, I, I sue me, I don't care.
I elected not to sue you for, for the recordings you made.
No, no, no.
But they're $5,000, $5,000 each.
Public record, pub, okay, fine. And then you go and take me to court on the $5,000. That's not a problem, that's not a problem. By the way-
Your time is up.
Since, no, no, it's not.
Your time is up.
Not, no, no, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, have someone tear me out.
Your time is up.
Mr. Morris, listen carefully.
You're out of order, the time is up, please move aside.
Do that again, give us something to remember you by, Mr. Morris. Listen, I was having a child in that back of the room, and you, and you told me, you told me-
Mr. Mathis?
Mr. Mathis, your time's expired.
Okay.
It's time for the next speaker.
Your time has expired. Your time has expired. Your time has expired.
All right, not a problem. I'm just letting you know, you're threatening me, okay?
I have not threatened you with anything.
Yes, you have. So, go ahead, I'll give you the five grand, it's not a big deal.
It's for each recording.
Big deal. Sue me. Sue me.
Is it okay to begin?
Yes, please do.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Jan Bartolo, I live in Villarreal. I did send an email today to the mayor and members of the council, and I'm sure most of you did not have an opportunity yet to review it, because I, you had the study session and council meeting tonight. So I'm sure in the due time, you'll have an opportunity. But in the gist of it was regarding the removal of trees on the property slated for upcoming residential development on Walnut. And I was extremely concerned with the loss of many of the trees on the property, or all the trees for that matter. There was five or six very mature, established oak trees there that had quite a substantial value, if you understand the significance of trees, as well as numerous other species. I understand that the city is very much wanting to work with local developers and to expedite and streamline their abilities to provide, you know, opportunities without feeling like there's any blocking being done by the council. But at the same time, I am concerned, again, about what is the city doing to establish criteria that would regulate the removal of the trees? In other words, we have a city code, we have municipal ordinances, we have a development review process, we have a city council, we have a planning department, there's numerous, I guess, loops to jump through if in fact you're trying to do a development on private property and/or public property. But what I don't understand is why the developer was not required to pay any compensation for any of the trees removed, to possibly comply with an enhanced landscape improvement plan after the project was approved, so that potential compensation for the loss or removal of substantial trees could be offset, possibly complicated, or compensated. There's a lot of questions, and maybe I'm not privy to all of them, but what I do know, again, as a long-term resident of this community, I think trees are one of the greatest values and assets this community has. And I think to not enhance and regulate and control the removal of trees, be they public or private, is just something that we should not accept as being an okay way of doing business. So whether we respond to the email and/or this is tabled for a future agenda item, I'd like to be notified, because I would like a lot of answers to the specifics that I in fact identified in my email. So I thank you for your time on that. And just real quick, before my time runs out, I did want to express a compliment publicly tonight to our Park and Recreation Director Hector Kissman. I just want to say, under his leadership, on behalf of myself serving as a Park and Recreation Commissioner, that I'm extremely pleased and impressed with his leadership skills and ability, including tonight's agenda where there are so many capital improvement projects for the development and betterment of our parks and our park and recreation system. So I want to publicly commend and acknowledge his workmanship. Thank you.
Well, I am here as an observer for the League of Women Voters. And the League of Women Voters has the Mount Baldy area, it's a new name, it used to be the League of Women Voters of Claremont. We've tried to expand that to it's the Mount Baldy area, but they wanted to express to you that they appreciate the San Dimas City Council inviting the Los Angeles Regional Census Center to speak to you tonight. An accurate census count is important to San Dimas and to all the cities in Los Angeles County. The local league is ready to assist the city in its census outreach in any way it can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen. I'll try and make this within the three minutes, but I'm speaking for 20 families tonight, so if I should go over, I would appreciate the consideration of maybe allowing me just a little bit more time. I'm here to address the coyote problem. And I'm not going to get into all the rhetoric, but I'm just going to tell you a few episodes that have happened recently. About four or five days ago, my mother witnessed a coyote tear a dog apart in her front yard. She lives two doors down from me, and it terrified her. We have the coyotes sleeping in our laundry room, and my neighbor here can testify, she's calling me a hero. I'm not a hero, I'm a fool, but I saved the life of her dog and her the other day when we were, three of us women were standing in our front yard, and we were just talking. And this coyote came up and went wham, tried to grab her dog, and me and my Donald Duck slippers and Batman pajamas and a stick chased it down the street. If the cops would have seen me, they would have been 51-50 out here, but, oh, I know it sounds ridiculous, but the point is, I just had a heart attack, and I risked my life chasing this coyote to save my friend. They're, at our home noonday and night, it's becoming a real problem. Now, I spoke personally, face-to-face with the SPCA yesterday. They came out and spoke with me, and I learned some really valuable facts about the coyotes. First of all, they're extremely intelligent animals. And what I found that really kind of perplexed me as well as fascinated me is when a female coyote is killed, she releases endorphins, which causes all the other female coyotes to go into heat. So that's probably one of the small reasons why we have such a large abundance of them. But we vote you in because we trust the fact that you're going to be here for us and make the right decisions for us. Please, something has got to be done. I'm scared to leave my home to walk my own dogs. I come out at night with a big stick, you know, I know I'm going to get arrested one night, because I really do look like some kind of crazy woman, because I want to make sure there's no coyotes out there. And several, hello, several times there has been, and I've had to chase them off, and I was told to do that by the SPCA. Yesterday, because nobody's doing anything about it, I sat down with all the neighborhood kids and gave them lessons on coyote safety. That's not my job, that's yours. So we're all asking, and if you want names of these other residents who's had encounters, we're happy to provide them to you, but one last thing, this bull crap, excuse my language, about controlling the rat population, I've raised my kids in this town and lived in this town for 30 years, and I've seen three rats. Our raccoons, our possums, our skunks used to take care of them. We don't have raccoons, possums, and skunks anymore, because the coyotes have eaten them all. We're finding cat heads on our sidewalks. It's a real problem. So what we're all asking you as a community, a lot of the residents are here, I don't know if they're going to speak, they kind of got scared after that little tirade that gentleman just threw. But anyways, please, we're asking you, it's time to step up and do something to protect us. That coyote was within two feet of us, and it was going to take her dog and hurt her. And please, this, we can't have our families and our dogs and our citizens harmed. You know, whatever needs to be done, we ask that you please do something about it before somebody seriously gets hurt.
What part of the city do you live in?
I live on San Dimas Canyon Road.
San Dimas Canyon.
Okay.
Are you, are you, are the people calling to the number that we have?
Oh, that number, that wonderful recording that nobody ever calls you back. And oh, and the coyote whistles you gave us, I love it. My neighbors laugh at me when I'm running down the streets with my whistle and my stick. And to be, I don't want to be rude in front of all these people, but I blew the whistle the other day at a coyote in broad daylight, and he pooped in front of me. It didn't scare him a bit. I'm sorry, he, I know it's, I'm not trying to be funny, he literally stopped, bed down, and pooped, and I'm blowing this whistle like some kind of psychotic weirdo. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, wow, you know, and, and I think the only reason it ran and not killed this woman the other night was because it was scared of my big giant duck slippers, you know, and, and to be honest with you, like I said, I just had a heart attack, and I put myself at risk chasing these coyotes, you know, and I shouldn't have to be out. We have a great park and recreation, wonderful, nice gentleman over there. There should be a class for the kids, you know, I was out there teaching the kids, you should have seen them all out there, hurr, doing what they, you know.
Let me ask you to give your telephone number to Brad. He's writing, he's right here.
Right in front of you here.
Right in front of you.
Oh, hi, Brad.
City manager, he's our local coyote expert.
You know what? I will work with you.
And then he can, he can contact you and get more information about it and-
That would be appreciated, because it's really scary when you go to do laundry and duck slippers, and there's coyotes sleeping in there. You know, they're becoming very, one thing I learned about from the specialists is they, they are not scared of us when we don't scream and yell at them and chase them off. One last thing, and I know there's other people that want to speak here, I'm not a snitchy person, and I'm not a Gladys Crips, and I'm not a, I'm going to film you and sue you for $5,000, but I do pay attention to things. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be funny, but that was hilarious. I'm sorry, some people are just born with no common sense. Now I lost my train of thought, this is not good. Okay, well, I forgot what I was going to say, so I guess it's not too important, but I'm sorry, that man threw me off. But when we speak, I'm sure I'll remember what it is, and hopefully we can get some resolved, because we're trusting you to protect us as the people of our city. And I am not chasing any more coyotes and duck slippers and sticks. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and everyone. So the library has reopened since December, and still, some residents still don't know that we have, we have reopened. So just let you know that we do have a very beautiful, the new service deck, and we do have a new self-checkout, and it's beautiful. And if you haven't visited the library, please take your time, and it's just a few steps away. So, and with the presidential, the primary election on March 3rd, so our library will be the vote by mail, the drop location starting on February 3rd until the election day, March 3rd. So, so if you, you cannot make it to the election, or, I believe we do have a lot of the voting location here too, but if you think that it will be very convenient for you, that you can drop your ballot at the library, starting on February 3rd. And with the tax season coming, so we are going to have, provide tax forms and instruction. However, because of the delay of delivery, we're still receiving some instruction booklet. So we do have already some forms already available, but if you want the instruction, maybe it's better to wait another week, then you can come to the library, we don't want you to waste your trip. And I know that everyone is busy, and sometimes you don't have time to visit the library, but you don't need to visit the library to use the library services, that you can go to our website, and we do have a lot of downloadable. You can read the eBooks online, and you can listen to the audiobooks, and when you, especially the traffic is so terrible in the Alloy County, so you can this, download through your iPhone or your Google Forms or whatever form, so then you can listen to your audiobooks. And we do have an Alloy County library, the apps that you can download, so welcome to use the service. And if you have any questions, just visit the library just next door. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just had one library comment I wanted to express with Nora here, and they do provide a lot of services, and I'll just emphasize the audiobooks. So my wife is downloading audiobooks and listening to them all the time, and she's, it's really a great service. You know, I just heard on the radio some service that they're advertising, and it's only $99 a year to get all these exercise books and stuff like that. Well, the library books are free, and they've got a ton of them, so it's, it's a really neat service. I just wanted to thank the library for that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council?
Hello. My name's Candace Ruttles, and I live San Dimas Canyon in Juanita, where the coyotes are. And the event the lady was talking about, we were all standing together, and it was quite a large coyote. I've seen a lot of coyotes, they've even followed me around in that area, but they've never approached me before, because I walk a lot. And this was right after sunset this time, and it actually did creep around, it started to crawl to jump in, and it would have had to hit one of us to get the dog. And thank God, she reacted quicker. I even had my pepper spray, but I was so startled, and it was so fast, and I didn't expect it really to run at us, because I haven't had that happen before. But she hadn't had that stick and scream, and even when she screamed and ran at it, it hesitated on running. So that one is especially bold, and it's, it's very big, it's a very big one. But I've had other incidents too, but they've all been, you know, a little frightening, but they haven't really come close to me. They've just followed me sometimes, but it's gotten a lot worse since this summer till now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council, good evening, great citizens of San Dimas. My name is Michelle Cash, Cash of Algeta, and that's Cash with a K, and I'm a Laverne resident, and I'm running for the 32nd Congressional District, and I want to introduce myself to the city, and hopefully if you see me around, I'll be around later on this evening if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns. I stand for God, country, and family, and I'm looking for your, your support in this next congressional race in the primaries, and God willing, to general election. So thank you very much for your time, and may God speed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all through. Okay, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have some items being removed from the consent calendar, and I believe the city attorney wants to discuss one of them and the city manager the other.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My item is item number 4C, that I'm asking the council take off the agenda tonight, and we'll bring it back at a later date, but the city received a letter from an individual this morning, making a number of legal allegations about our ADU ordinance. Spent some of the day trying to analyze those, but haven't quite finished yet, and so just to be safe, I'd like to ask that that be taken off the agenda, and we'll bring it back at a later meeting.
What's the second thing?
The second thing the city manager is going to discuss right now.
Yeah, and that's actually item F on the consent calendar, and that was the award of a contract or a bid for playground equipment for Civic Center Park. And similar, we received a letter from, from an individual who was questioning the bid procedure for that process. So we're pulling that item from the agenda so that we can clarify the process that we've gone through, so that'll be brought back in two weeks also.
Okay, with those exceptions.
I had a couple items too, Mr. Mayor. So item 4D on the second reading of the municipal code text amendment, are we, is that staying on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. On that one, I just wanted to make a comment. That was about the accessory dwelling units that we-
No, this one is about the daycare, family daycare homes.
Oh.
The one on the accessory dwelling units is the one that's been-
Oh, that's the one that's being, okay, never mind. Strike that comment then, forget that. The other one, though, I wanted to talk about or ask Hector to talk about was 4I, which is an allocation of money for the Ladera Sarah Playground, and I just think that's a good thing for the community to know what we're doing. It's one of these good things. So Hector, I was wondering if you could just explain what's going on with that particular
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the item that you are inquiring about is the replacement of the playground equipment at Ladera Sarah Park. The playground that is currently on site was built in 1981, and it no longer complies with some of the ADA requirements, the accessibility issues. The playground industry is one that changes very rapidly, and they are always enhancing or upgrading their standards in some of the code that goes along with that. So the surfacing that's there as well, the playground surfacing, which is one for two purposes. One is for accessibility onto playground or onto the playground. The other is for impact attenuation. So if a participant or somebody using the equipment was to fall off the playground, it acts as a deterrent for a major injury. So both of these things are going to be replaced. In your packet, you do have a conceptual design of what will be replaced. The new playground is accessible to all, so, and we are removing the sand as well, so no more sand surface there. It will all be, you know, poured in place rubber for, again, accessibility and greater impact attenuation. So Ladera Sarah Park is located in Villa Verde area, and it's a neighborhood park, but a very well-used park. And we host some of our camps there as well during the summer and during the Christmas break. So the children who participate in those programs also use the playground. So I believe this will be a great addition or, you know, a new component to that park.
Thank you, and we're actually pulling about $12,000 from reserves in order to complete the project, because the budget wasn't quite big enough to do what we want to do. So it's a, it's a.
Yes, and that is due to the, again, back to the Americans with Disabilities Act and making sure that we are in compliance with some of the accessibility issues there, so replacing a lot of the concrete access points to that playground.
Money well spent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hector, how many, how many other parks do we have that's going to need replacement of playground equipment?
We have two parks that I can think of right now, actually three. One is Loma Vista, the other is the Lone Hill Park. So one of those playgrounds was replaced in the recent few years, but there's another set that needs replacement. And then the last is Kiwinas Corner, that centipede there. So those would be the remaining three.
Okay, as, as we all know, Villa Verde Park was replaced a year, last year, a year and a half ago, and there was some conversation about, from the, from the parents, that the equipment during the, during the summer and the beginning of September, October, was just flat too hot for the kids to play on. So they'd go to the park, they'd see this equipment, but their parents couldn't allow them. Have we talked anymore about some type of shading or anything like that?
So, yes, about a year ago, we did look at that, at the request of some, some of those concerned parents. And we, some costs were gathered and presented to the then-city manager. So the, the cost is very high because of the fact that the playground is a large area, and it was not designed with a shade on it. So after the fact, it's much harder to design or to put a shade structure on it. The only solution would be to build a rather large structure, and the larger the structure, the more it costs. So, you know, it's, it has been reviewed, and, you know, council pleasure, I guess, at this point.
Thank you. I do think we need to at least look at it. It's kind of, kind of useless to have, you know, spend almost $400,000 to have a playground equipment put into the, put in the project, having to move it for ADA and all these other things, and not be able to have kids during the prime playtime do it. So I would be interested in at least those numbers. And you may have supplied them at one time or another, but I'd like to be refreshed on those.
I think we could include that in the budget discussions too, for the next fiscal year.
I think that'd be a good idea. Thank you.
I think we'd better move on, or the city attorney is going to tell us we're talking about things not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one correction on 4E. That would be the minutes for November 12th, 4E, page 15. And my only comment on there, on the second line, we would strike the word "not." Oh, you already got it? We're good? Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent calendar. Anyone opposed?
With the exception of the two items removed by the city.
The two items, right.
With exception of the items removed. Further consideration later. Is anybody opposed to the motion? Hearing none, the motion carries by a unanimous vote, and we'll now move on to. Get all the way over to the end of the consent calendar, which is a long way. Other business, first item is the gold line update. Anybody have anything to update us on the gold line?
Actually, no, we don't have any report this week.
Okay. Then next would be adopting resolutions to establishing a debt service policy and approving the refinancing of bonds for the Civic Center renovation. Ken?
Yeah, back in the fall of last year, the city staff had presented to the council an opportunity for us to refinance the lease revenue bonds that were issued to partially fund the renovation of the Civic Center several years ago. There is a call provision that goes into effect in June of this year, and so we've been working with Cosmont Finance to assist us with exploring the opportunity of refinancing the bonds and taking advantage of a better market that's out there right now. So the existing debt service on the bonds is about $3.6 million, and we can reduce that down for, currently the payments on an annual basis are about $734,000, and those payments come from the general fund. And so with the refinancing, we'll be able to reduce that annual debt service to $697,000 for savings of about $36,800 per year for the next couple of years for that bond. So, and that's net of all the costs of reissuance of the bonds. There was an action that the public financing authority took at your last meeting, or two meetings ago, I believe, that set into place some of the steps that would be necessary for this refinancing. So what's before you this evening are actually two resolutions. One is a resolution establishing a debt issuance policy for future obligations, which is a new state requirement. And then the other is adopting the resolution that actually contains a number of attachments, which are the various agreements, lease agreements, and so forth, that actually effectuate the reissuance of the bonds. So staff's recommendation would be to adopt each of those resolutions in order, you would adopt the debt, debt issuance policy first, and then adopt the resolution pertaining to the other actions for the bond refinancing. In the audience tonight is Dan Nacilio from Cosmont Financial, who is here to answer any specific questions you might have on either the resolutions or any of the attachment documents.
Okay, we're, we have received the report. The resolutions are, the first resolution establishing the policy is Resolution 2020-04. If we are so inclined, we could read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution 2020-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, California, establishing a debt issuance policy for future obligations.
Do we have a motion to way further reading and adopt?
Yes, I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and second, way further reading, adopt, and adopt. Anybody like to discuss the matter further? Is anybody opposed to the motion? Hearing no opposition, that carries by a 5-0 unanimous vote. The next resolution is Resolution 2020-05. This includes the specific documents, as the city manager commented, with many attachments that relate to the specific refinancing that is being done. Would you read that by title, please?
Resolution 2020-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Dimas, California, authorizing the execution and delivery of financing documents to refinance certain $20,000 of the San Dimas Public Finance Authority and directing certain actions with respect thereto.
Way further reading and adopt.
Second.
Quick question, when is the, when do the payments end on that, Ken?
And Dan, is that 2024? I think it's a year earlier than the original schedule, so I think there's four more years left on that. Do you recall, Dan? Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is anybody opposed to the motion? Hearing no opposition, the motion carries by a 5-0 unanimous vote. That brings us now to a meeting of the successor agency. For those of you who are not familiar with the term successor agency as used here, after the redevelopment agency was abolished by the state and was closed down, the cities were named as the successor agency for the redevelopment agencies to dispose of the property that belongs to the redevelopment agency. And so we are now having a meeting of that agency, which is separate from the city council, even though it looks a lot like the city council. But, so, and this is to discuss a proposed contract with Cosmont Companies for real estate advisory services for the successor agency owner property at 344 West Benita Avenue.
And I have to recuse myself, so call me when you're done.
Okay, we will.
Don't go too far. Yeah, the item before you is a revised contract with Cosmont Companies, as the agency is aware. A year and a half ago, the city retained the services of Cosmont Companies to market and do some feasibility studies for the property at 344 West Benita Avenue. Recently, the agency has directed staff and Cosmont Companies to begin discussions with a specific developer to negotiate an exclusive negotiating agreement, and during the process of the exclusive negotiating agreement, to do some further due diligence on the property in question. The original scope of work did not include the negotiation and the carrying out of duties for the E&amp;A, so this new agreement with Cosmont Companies would include that additional scope of services. The contract itself is in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Those funds would come from the successor agency. So staff's recommendation would be to approve the contract with Cosmont Companies in the amount not to exceed $60,000. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think just for the general public's knowledge, that would be commonly referred to as the Benita Cataract Project.
That's correct.
Okay, versus the numbers 344, common, common language for us is the Benita Cataract.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the contract. Any further discussion? Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, that carries by a 4-0 unanimous vote with Mr. Ebner being recused. We'll now move on to the oral communications, second oral communications event. For this one, the, the members of the audience have. The rules are the same as before, except the time limit is five minutes. Anybody who wants to address the city council, you're invited to do so now.
Hi, Pete Lewis. I emailed you guys, I think, on the Metro Board meeting from last Friday. I think you probably all got it, hopefully. I didn't, I don't really have a formal thing to really read. I thought, there's a couple things. I talked to them about the need for a sound wall, and if you read it, you already know my reasoning for that. There's other issues that I obviously didn't, I've discussed before, and I thought I'd just really quick go through them again. The shortcomings on their testing was that they didn't, they took an average 24-hour test, they didn't do peak, and, and, you know, the, an average doesn't capture the loud noises you hear at 4:30 in the morning, and every half hours after that. Thank you. You know, I don't know what the official, you know, 60 decibels, 65 decibels, whatever that is, but I do know when it wakes me up, and I could, you know, that's what, how I look at noise testing. They also did not use the worst case, they mean, they've ran BNSFs through that corridor for a year straight, they've done it twice to us. I don't want it a third time without any mitigations. This is our chance to have mitigations. They also didn't use the worst locations, which we were offered to them, and they were supposed to take, but they, they said they were going to, and they didn't. I'm not happy with that, and since then that neighbor has moved. It was between both the cataract and the, and the San Dimas Avenue crossing. The other thing I didn't also talk about is the privacy concerns. When trains are double-tracked, a wall would provide more privacy for a lot of houses, and not necessarily my house, for different fact, for my house, it probably doesn't make any, but a lot of people have swimming pools, when you take that, a ride down that corridor, you hook down, you're looking down everybody's backyard. It's not, you know, privacy is also a concern. The other thing I didn't talk about, and I know the mayor's very interested, is the money. It's a hundred thousand per year, or whatever it is, for the crossing insurance. They had also said they were going to have some work on that and get back to us, that was a couple years ago, and they, as far as I know, they never have. There should be some look at the financing part of it. When I did my talk, I also sent it to Jay, who's the project manager, his boss, I sent it to, oh, some other people. When I was looking up the email addresses, I was looking for executive officers on the Metro organization chart. There are 69 executive officers in that, that does not include their, their finance guy, the CFO, the CEO, the whatnots, there's 69 people. And I also saw that there was, they had hired seven more. These people, it's, well, to me, it's incredible, but, and there's, I'm just an old guy. They hired a chief ethics officer, an executive officer of equity and raise, a chief sustainability officer, an executive officer of sustainability policy. But they also offered, they also hired a person who's a chief risk, safety, and asset management officer. That might be somebody that the mayor, or somebody looking at finding, you know, if you want to self-insure or something, this person might be the individual, they might have actually hired somebody, that would be somebody we want to contact with. I know you're not going to be here forever, but maybe, maybe your successor may want to look at that, so I brought that in, I'll share it with you later. They also had a presentation while I was there, the safety officer came and talked, and they're looking at train strikes now, they're having, they've hired a consultant, he's coming in with a report in March, they're looking for the root causes of their, of their high strike rates. They finally, after a few years, have realized that homelessness is one of the big strike sources. Three years ago, I talked to them, I said it was cruel and unusual, running those BNSFs. And if it's inside a house, you think it's, it's bad? If you're homeless, you're on by that train, it had to be, it had to be cruel and unusual, that'd be a terrible punishment for those people. I'm glad they're doing this, it's, it's well, you know, necessary, but it took them forever to figure that out. I also, just real quickly, when I went, I took the MetroLink from North Pomona into Union Station, and they gave me a free ticket, but they do that for all residents really, if you go around it. I noticed that the fencing on the north side, once you go past San Dimas Canyon, before you get to Walnut, there's fencing there, and it's all, I've noticed, that's where we had our strikes towards the San Dimas Canyon Crossing, but as you get towards Walnut, the fencing is all, almost laying, it's been way knocked down. It's not easily seen, you can see it very easily from the train, but you can't see it from, you know, the streets or anything. It's very thick brush and stuff there. I think it might be worthwhile for someone to take a little trip from North Pomona to Gavina and back. I don't know if MetroLink would provide you free tickets or something. There's also an area closer to a wall, is it, it's closer to the Mobile Home Park, and there's very heavy graffiti. It's, it's, it looks like downtown LA, it's got big orange, red, yellow, green, you know, all kinds of words and whatnots. It's visible very easily from the train, I don't know where you would. I don't know where you would see it walking around or something, but it's something that probably should be addressed. It's MetroLink's issue, I would guess. I think that's pretty much all I want to talk about. Perfect timing. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council? Okay, we'll move on to the city manager.
Yeah, just a couple of items. An announcement regarding the March 3rd general municipal election. Sample ballots will be received by residents beginning of next week. Is that correct, Deborah? Yeah. And we want to make sure that when you receive your sample ballot, we've mentioned this at previous city council meetings, that there is a new voting process that the county is undertaking for this election. And we would encourage residents, when you receive your sample ballot, please take a look at it right away so that you understand that process. As we've mentioned, it no longer will include local voting precincts. There will be voting centers throughout the county. There will be one in San Dimas, and that's the San Dimas Community Center. And that center will actually be open starting February 22nd through the March 3rd election. And if you're looking for a place to physically vote in San Dimas, that's the only location. However, there are a number of other voting center locations throughout the county that you can take advantage of. And as Nora Chen mentioned, that the San Dimas Library is also a drop-off center for vote-by-mail ballots, so you can take advantage of that. But it's very important that people understand early that this new process, and they don't wait until the last minute or the day of the election to try and figure out where they're going to vote, because it could be very impactful if you try and vote at the one location here in San Dimas. And we also want to remind residents that the city does have a measure on the ballot, Measure SD, and there's educational information on our city's website if you'd like to find out more about that. The only other item I have is that we will have asked the mayor show this Thursday.
Sure.
And the live call-in portion will begin at 7 o'clock. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the city council, first, anybody attend a meeting since we last reported at the expense of the city? Seeing nobody making a report, we'll move on to individual comments and updates, and start with Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things for those that didn't have an opportunity to come to our study session, 5 o'clock today. A lot of very interesting topics discussed. I'd encourage you to look at some of the collateral, but more specifically, there seems to be some interest by folks regarding housing. And last council meeting, the staff did a pretty comprehensive job of covering, I think, housing and accessory dwelling units and some of that stuff. So I'd encourage members of the public, if you're interested, please look at that staff report. It was included in the agenda for our last city council meeting. I think you'll find some very educational information. The other thing out of that meeting is, you know, it's a very interesting time in San Dimas. We've talked about transition. We've talked about transition of staff and council and things like this. But it's really important that the community understands you need to wrap your head around transition in the state and the legislature as well. And so I encourage you to look at those, look at that staff report and take a step back and maybe have a glass of wine and marinate on it for a little bit and think about the fact that the city does have to provide housing in some capacity and has to be able to, at some point, reach a goal of providing upwards of 1,000 homes, you know, that are affordable in one capacity or another. So please do that, and nothing is off the table, I suppose, in the way the legislation's going. So the sooner we get ahead of it, the better. The second thing is, I want to commend, I think this is the first meeting that I think I saw every candidate for city council attend at one time or another. I think it's good that the candidates come out, follow the discussion, be privy to it. I will say that, having done my own homework, I encourage the community to pay attention to these candidates. There's some very unique positions, and each one of them has some very unique things and qualities about them that fundamentally could definitely weigh, bring things to the table to the council. So I do think it's important for everybody to engage. And to that end, I think it's important that the community knows that the city, because I've gotten a lot of calls about it, does have ordinances that address these signs in the community. There's permission that needs to have been gotten to be able to place signage on property. And so please, if you're a candidate, please get permission. Don't put them in the public right-of-way, and Caltrans easements or anything like this. We do get phone calls. I'm sure staff gets phone calls more than we do, or maybe not. But I know I've received a few phone calls from folks. And I think the message there is that, you know, people want to know that we're, especially if you're running, that you've taken the time to research and play by the rules and know what the rules are. So please be respectful of that and the people in our community. And at the same time, if you're a resident and you're upset about it, I think you can contact the city clerk's office, you know, and air your grievance there, and I think they're able to get in touch with the respective folks that are responsible. So with that, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. John?
Just piggybacking on what Ryan was saying about campaign signs. Comment or clarification, and then a question. So the clarification is that in residential zones, signs can be placed in the public right-of-way, which, by that, I'm talking about the parkway. So not, you know, between the sidewalk and the street. Even though that is city property and it's the public right-of-way, you can place a sign there. Now, of course, that makes it easier for people to just drive by and pull them out, which can happen. But that's, so that's legal. But related to that, I was just wondering, a question for maybe Ken or the city attorney. There are rules for where to place signs, as Ryan just talked about, and a lot of it involves permission. However, who is authorized to remove the signs? And I guess the question then is, can a just regular citizen or other candidate, if they see a sign put in the wrong place, like say it's at a shopping center, you know, berm or something like that, can another person, not the city, take it upon themselves to remove the sign?
If we're talking about a residential property that has a sign...
Non-residential property.
Oh, we're talking about a non-residential property?
So it's placed illegally, so to speak. And, you know, thankfully, I mean, what's great about San Dimas is we don't have signs all over the place like a lot of communities do, and so people do follow the rules. But sometimes people put them out there, even in a median or someplace like that. They're not supposed to be there. However, I'm not sure that just anybody can go and take them...
No. If it's on private property, then a person who is not the owner of that property should not remove the sign, even if it's a non-residential property. If it's a sign, and so we have requests that they call the city to remove an illegal sign. If it's something that's in the public right-of-way, like in the street median, we would also request that they contact the city to remove the sign, rather than doing it themselves. You first asked a question, though, about who is authorized to remove signs, I think, on residential property?
It was mainly the illegal signs, wherever they happen to be. I mean, on residential property, I guess it'd be illegal if somebody put it up in front of somebody's house, you know, or on a...
It would. Similarly, it would be illegal for a person who doesn't own that property to go on that property and remove the sign, even if the sign is illegally placed without the owner's consent. So if it's a residential property, then the owner of the property can remove it anytime they want to, because it's on their property. Or they can ask the city to remove it, and then we have a process where we have to give a five-day notice to the owner of the residential property before we remove the illegal, illegally placed sign.
All right, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, may I jump in? I keep jogging my memory on something?
Yes.
So a candidate, actually, and probably not just one, had their signs damaged or vandalized or destroyed over the course, since all this madness has started. And so one thing is, you know, there's been discussion about enforcement. I know the city attorney did send some information regarding criminal penalties, you know, in terms of vandalism and theft, as it related to signs and how signs, political signs, cannot be treated any differently than any other sign. I'd be interested if council and staff in the future, near future, would have a discussion regarding enforcement of our signs and discussion regarding administrative enforcement during these periods. I think that there are ways that perhaps would not tax our law enforcement resources, but could be handled through administrative citation and addressed like this remedy period, if there was a way to discuss that a little bit and see if a 24-hour remedy might be more appropriate once we notice responsible party. So I don't know if anyone else is interested in that, but I am.
Can I add on to my comment? Just, last campaign, this is kind of amusing, but it's, there was a certain person who was very, very enthusiastic, let's put it that way. So he said, "I got a great place for one of your signs." And I said, "Okay, here's the sign," you know, telling me it needs permission. Well, he put it right near Avenue de Entrada, and there's like a house right there and a hillside, right? But it's really somebody's property, right? But he didn't ask anybody's permission. I didn't know that. So he put the sign there, and then it was gone, because the property owner took it down. He called me up again, and I still didn't know where it was. He says, "Hey, I need another sign." And so I gave him another sign. This happened about three times. Finally, I get a call from the owner of the house saying, you know, "Nothing against you, but I really just don't want a sign right there." And I realized then what was happening and called up the person. And that also happened recently up at the 76th Station in Via Verdi. All of a sudden, somebody put a sign of mine up there, and, you know, I apologized because they did not get permission. They said, "Oh, I saw these other signs, I figured just put it up there." But I told them not to do that, so.
Emma?
Not to beat a dead horse to death here, but when John was talking about putting, asking permission for signs and he clarified where signs can go, is it a wrong understanding, or my wrong understanding, that the parkway in front of your home, you can put the sign in, but it has to be your home?
Right, yes.
Right? It can't be just a guy drives down the street and starts slamming signs in. It has to be, the way I understood it, it has to be the parkway in front of your home that you give permission to.
Yeah, a property owner, homeowner can give permission to someone to put the sign in their yard or in the parkway. They have to get that homeowner's permission.
Thank you. And other than that, it's kind of been a long evening with a lot of things been going on, talking about during our study session. Housing is on everybody's mind, and it will be a continuing subject for many, many months. So, you know, there is going to be, I understand, Ken was asked, as Ryan indicated, to try to put together a community meeting advising about SB 50, because we do have people who really are confused with it and are starting to think that their property values are going to be affected. So I'd appreciate, Ken, if we continue with putting that together. Thank you.
Okay, I have a, be finished, sir. A pertinent announcement. We know that on March 3rd, there's a city election. And this is a very important election, and the city council will have to be making a lot of important decisions. So on February 5th, which is a week from tomorrow, we're having a candidates forum. And all the candidates, I'm sure, will be there. And after they ask their formal questions from the dais or up on the stage, they stick around and you can talk to them and ask them if you have something specific in mind. You can question them about it. So it's important that you attend the February 5th, Wednesday, candidates forum if you want to be well-informed. And that's it, sir.
Thank you. Well, I really have nothing to add, so we will be adjourning this meeting and reconvening at 5:00 PM on February 11th for a study session. And followed by the regular city council meeting at 7:00. And with that, we're adjourned.